Okay. It's a couple minutes past six, so let's start our call to order, our Acton School Committee meeting on December 10th, 2013. Let's see, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I would just like to mention that Bill Hall won't be here this evening. He was hopeful that he could be and he has to be on the agenda, but he had another commitment that he had to do. But I'm going to ask him to report on what he would have been saying to you folks. So that won't be there.
All right. When we get there then, we'll count on him. Okay, I will ask for approval of the minutes from November 12th, 2013.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of November 12th as written.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Mary, seconded by Jeanette, that we accept the regular meeting of November 12th as printed. Any discussion? How is in favor? Here's Kevin. Comments from the public? Yes, Richard?
Judy, I discussed with you yesterday morning on the phone about some issues that have happened with us. I didn't know if we're going to be able to resolve some of these tonight or...
I think Ken has been in touch with Jeanne on all of the issues that you've brought up to me. And he has a response from her on all of those things, if you want to share. We did invite her to be here if she could, but she said she'd be glad to meet with us at another time, but she had another commitment tonight. But she did send Ken written responses to all of her, all the concerns that we mentioned.
There's enough, so Mr. Micho can...
So you want to come get one of these too?
Before we read it, I'd like to mention that this task was presented to me not just this week, but it was something I've been working on for, this is the second week, and I've been in communication with Jeanne Monroe, the manager of the bus company. This is my second round of, second week of communications. I had several communications last week specifically about the heat levels of the buses for the high school students and also an instance that we were concerned that in slippery conditions a week ago, one of the drivers might have been driving a little too quickly. So I've been in contact with her. I've received answers to those questions and then because of the fact that one of them, it appears, wasn't resolved as of yet, we pursued that again, and that's the temperature and then several other things that Mr. Micho may have brought up. Eve can speak to them if you'd like, since it's his part of the agenda. But I would like to think that we do take action and we do the best we can to make sure that the customer service offered by the bus company is the way it should be based on the contractual arrangement we have.
Well, this is some of my concerns is, it's just recently come to my attention because, like I explained to Judy, a couple of situations that happened at home. My youngest daughter, she's the first person on the bus in the morning, so the bus essentially comes from here to my home, it's about three, three and a quarter miles away. Being 30 years driving truck, I kind of got an idea of what a diesel is going to do and how long it's going to take to heat it up. And discussing the situation, I find that the people in charge of buses, they're on the, the understanding that they can only idle three minutes to warm the bus up, okay? That's not sufficient time to heat that engine up. Even from here to my home, it's not sufficient time to heat that engine up. So you take the size of a bus in open space at 20 degrees, it's not going to, you know, heat up much more than 20, 25 degrees by the time it gets down there. I'm going to assume it's going to take close to a half hour to start to bring that up to a 45, 50 degree range, not knowing how well these buses are insulated. I assume they're pretty well insulated. But the, for a student's contention is, the law only require, says that they can only idle three minutes, which is not true. They can idle five minutes under normal circumstances. Below 32 degrees, they're allowed to idle 15 minutes in any 60 minute period. But with any law, these laws are across the country, and with any law, they're our exemption. There's thousands of trucks staying in the state of Maine overnight. These people do not sit in it, sleep in their trucks and freeze. They're our exemption. So I went and looked up the laws. They have, they have an exemption where they can idle that truck, that bus, whatever they need to do to bring it up to temperature. Part of my concern with not bringing it up to temperature is, having 30 years' experience on the road, you're not going to take a vehicle, run it for three minutes when it's 20 degrees outside and take off and be able to see safely, especially a morning like this morning. I ran my, my personal vehicle for 20 minutes just to get out of my driveway. You know? So it's not only the heat, there's a safety issue there too.
If we look at what she has said, "Taking a proactive approach, we will bring a thermometer gauge to each bus and in turn to monitor the temperature inside and determine if any one or more bus heaters are not working at potential." They have separate heaters, they refer to as webasto heaters. "We continue to work with Acton drivers to make sure that, make the best use of the webasto heaters to warm fluids which in turn produce heat faster inside of the bus." Again, I have told her that her prior answers weren't sufficient and that, so this is the most recent salvo from her about what they're going to do to make sure that the buses are warm.
Well, these heaters are designed to assist the fluid in the bus to warm up from the engine temperature. If they're properly working, they do assist, but keep in mind, it's not like you're heating the cab of an ordinary vehicle, you're heating that whole bus. And from 20 degrees, and like we were just discussing a few minutes ago, that's going to be a high temperature on Thursday, so our low is going to be around 30, excuse me, around zero at, you know, 5 and 6 o'clock in the morning. So I'm looking at, I know it's in the contract because I helped put this contract together. 55 degrees is reasonable. I would even be satisfied at 45 degrees by the time I get to my house, but when my daughter has to be fully dressed and pack a blanket to get on the bus, you know...
But is this because the bus company doesn't want to pay an extra half hour's time to the bus driver or something to be there earlier to warm it up for a half hour?
I understand what it is.
I don't know.
It's cost, it's cost four dollars a gallon, give or take a few cents.
Right.
Idling a bus 20 minutes, 15, 20 minutes or a half hour isn't going to take an excessive amount of fuel, you're running up on a slightly higher idle than just sitting there.
Right.
Okay? But for those few cents, I don't see our kids putting up, you know, and tolerating this. And I think it's a fuel cost issue. Every company, my company, a worldwide corporation, they're after us for every minute. But they also understand, you know, you're not going to leave there when you can't keep your windshield defrosted, you know, and you're going to, you know, you're going to be reasonably comfortable. I broke down, you know, here or there. I had to wait for a tow truck last winter in the middle of a blizzard for three hours. I'm not going to sit there and freeze. You know, I can keep the truck running. And, you know, I think it's just, you know, common sense, you know, and it's in the contract. That's what they signed for. If they didn't understand what they were signing for, then they shouldn't have signed it. It's the same thing with the Icon, the drop down chains. Some towns, you know, maybe in Sanford, they don't need them as much. Out here, because Brian and I discussed that, because Brian asked me when he wanted to put this in the contract, when they were renewing it. We discussed it and like I told them, they're not used to drive down the road, they have to get yourself out of an emergency situation. If you look at the majority of our oil and propane trucks, because they get into oddball places, uphill driveways and stuff, they have them on it. Our own rescue unit has, has drop down chains on it. They're there to assist in an emergency situation. Some of our buses, I mean, it'd be fine if they're all stopping on flat ground. If they're all stopping and starting on flat ground, fine. That's not going to happen here in the town of Acton.
So you're saying they're not even on the buses right now? Is that what...
Not the last time I looked, never the last week.
It says in the response that we got from Jeanne today that, let's see, "Because it's the swap out of buses this school year, the chains must be added to the new Acton buses. We had hoped to have them from the previous buses, but they do not fit these particular buses. New chains are on order and will be installed as soon as possible."
What does that mean?
It means that...
I know, but...
They're on order.
I'm just saying, I never heard, you know, my kids have been on the buses forever and I never heard of cold problem or they just never complained. I don't know.
Well, my question is, is prior to this year, it may have started last year, I don't know, because my daughter was still here in Acton, so by then the bus is already warmed up, they done one run.
Oh, you're saying going in the high school?
Exactly. So it came to my attention, especially when she's the first child on the bus, okay?
The drivers must be cold at the same time.
I don't...
I don't think that's right.
I think we could ask one of the drivers.
So clarifying question?
I can't see the drivers because they're behind the thing, but I know we have some here.
I think they're here because, because some of the questions I've been asking, I stopped and asked the bus driver last week, you know, what was going on as far as the temperature. And my understanding is they're not allowed to idle because the law says they can only idle for three minutes.
What?
And I knew that, and I knew I was wrong. So I went to the state website last night, printed off the exemptions, you know. I don't agree with, you know, a lot of state federal laws, some of them put them in place for reasons. But also with putting in place, most of them have exemptions for certain reasons, and this is one of them.
Did you, did you bring copies of that with you tonight? Excellent.
Thank you for sharing those.
Yes, Kevin, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no. So just getting caught up to speed, basically, I mean, it's a simple matter. The, it sounds like the bus is too cold for the first pickup. Is this a response, number one, is that the response to the claim that it's too cold on the buses?
Yes.
Number one is, yes.
So with one, I'm actually not seeing an answer to the question in the sense of, I'm seeing some melee maldeness.
It's an explanation.
Yeah, I'm not even sure I'd go as much of an explanation. I think the intent is there, but in this case, what's still not clear to me is what temperature should it be and will it be? If there's, if they're bringing thermometers, it's good, but I still don't have an understanding that, is it supposed to be 55 degrees by the time the first kid gets picked up?
By the time the bus is occupied, that's what the contract says, I believe.
Okay. So I'm looking at this, I'm not exactly still sure what the bus company is going to do. Getting a thermometer tells me what temperature it is, it doesn't tell me what I'm going to do to heat it.
I can tell you...
Does that make sense? I'd like, I'd just like to know what their, their plan is. So I'd like a little bit more information from...
I can tell you from my personal experience, like I said, I've dealt with these types of engines and I'm still dealing with them today and tomorrow. The simple fact of the matter is, the only way to solve this problem is to preheat the bus. You know, the simple solution would happen, one bus driver would be on a rotating basis, you know, one person come in, half hour, 20 minutes ahead of time, start all the buses, let them warm up and sit there and supervise them.
They used to do that. I don't know if they do that down there, but up here, it's a little different. Don't you go out and start your bus and let it run? No?
Do they tell you not to? So it's probably a few...
They used to have them started.
From what I'm understanding, you know, like I said, they, they say the, the law says three minutes. It's not. It's technically five minutes, but two minutes isn't going to make a difference. But there are plenty of exemptions.
Well, it seems like she's agreeing with that in the sense of saying idling...
I feel they fall on that, also for others that fall on that.
It can take as much as a half an hour for the driver to get warm.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, I, I've been on that route, you know?
Way long underwear too?
Right. Ken, when did you get this response?
Got this response this morning at about, well, 11:30.
So do we want to maybe give it a couple weeks, see if things improve?
Well, I think it's a good sign that not only is Richard here to help us out, who has excellent experience in this, as does Jeanette, but if two drivers came, that gives us further ammunition in this discussion. And I appreciate the fact you've maybe taken a risk on your job by coming, but...
Well, I don't, I want you to understand that the drivers just here because of the concerns I've been raising as a resident of the town as a parent.
Are you both residents?
Well, they shouldn't be for their jobs.
No. And if that's the case, I think I would personally follow, follow through, you know, to see that we...
Do you know their names so that you can put it down as a guess?
It does, it does say on here that a passenger bus idles a maximum of 15 minutes in any 60 minute period to maintain passenger comfort while non-driver passengers are on board. Okay? Then it says that it can go for another 10 minutes beyond that limit to operate heating equipment when the air temperature is 32 degrees Fahrenheit or below.
Right.
So a motor vehicle idles as long as needed for the purpose of providing heat when the ambient temperature is below zero degrees. So, you know, that, that might say, you might have to run it for a half an hour.
Have to conserve gasoline and preserve clean air, and that's why we freeze, just so everyone knows.
Exactly.
I mean, my thing is, one of these buses gets up the road, gets loaded with kids, and let's say it has a flat tire, it breaks its drive shaft, something that's not going to stop the vehicle from running. If it takes an hour for them to get there and Thursday it's 10 degrees out, is that bus supposed to shut down and not idle and keep the kids warm?
Well, to keep clean air, yes.
I would think that...
We ain't going to have that discussion, Mary.
I would think the old level.
I would think someone would use their head and not let them sit there.
With the common sense in this whole situation.
Right, the common sense, right.
I think maybe the common, I think maybe the common sense is going by the way of dollars and cents.
Is the, is the, do the heaters run, does the idle operate the heater?
If you're idling.
When the vehicle is heating up, the, the engine's warming up, that heating in the back of the bus is tied altogether with the, the engine heat. So if your engine heat isn't there, you're not going to get heat in the back.
So reading this with the exemptions, the time limit doesn't apply when the motor vehicle idles when operating a heater. So really, there is no time limit.
Exactly.
So, I mean, it really sounds like a very simple thing. The buses need to be warmer and they need to idle them longer and it sounds like they...
Means they have to pay the bus driver.
But it sounds like, if I'm reading the intent here, I'd like a little bit more specificity that what they will do actually to get the buses warmer.
It's going to give you a thermometer.
I've never seen a thermometer generate heat, so...
No, the webasto heaters. That'll tell you how long they're making things, but not, if they're not warm enough, then what?
Right. Now, when you get up in the morning, you got to go out, check the oil and check the tires and all that, still do the same story.
Vehicle check.
Then you start up the engine and we used to just go through the bus and it would sit there almost a half an hour or inside the barn, someone would come out and do that. And those buses were fairly warm trying to heat all that space. And you're still wore long underwear.
Yeah, but Jeanette...
We do all of that, we do our air brakes, then start the bus, you have three minutes, then you leave.
Well, it can't, well, it can't work that way.
We are allowing you here in Acton to come early and we'll make sure they pay for that.
We're not worried about our clean air up here. We've got lots of fresh, clean air.
Make sure they pay for it.
Those people in town wouldn't agree with that.
They get paid like for a two hour run, no matter what, I think.
Yeah, we're not talking about summertime, we're talking about...
We got plenty of fresh, clean air, enough so that we can, I mean...
Our trees can absorb this CO2.
You bring your bus home, right? No? I thought they had solved that problem and you were able to bring your bus home. We took care of that last whatever, I thought.
No, because the, the bus company is insistent because, like I spoke with Judy yesterday on the phone, I went and online to pull off a copy of the contract, was going through it again. And the contract does say that the buses are going to be housed here and that's what the, the bus company is going by.
They must have wanted that.
And that's, I think, that's kind of the bus company's choice, that's not up to Acton, you know, to, to decide how that works. You know, our concern, I believe, is the things that aren't being followed by a signed legal document, the bus temperature, the drop down change.
Even the response here on number two where their response is, "The new chains are on order and will be installed as soon as possible," we're in the middle of December. I mean, give me a break, you know? Pile of little Acton kids in these buses, middle of December and they haven't, you know?
And is the change, I'm assuming that number two is because of the slipperiness of the, the buses sliding?
Well, their emergency chains not to use on a regular basis, but when he says drop down, I, I was in the industry, of course, with 110 tractor trailer rigs for idle net and we didn't put chains on, but we did have, because we're tractor trailers, but the few straight drops we had, we had drop downs so that if we were in a, in a situation or the bulk pickup tank that had the farms, the drop down chain would fall into the place so you should get some, a little bit of traction and then get yourself out.
Gotcha.
That's what they're at, because, you know, we stopped in the middle of, I'm not sure about coming up Melville Road, but definitely stopped going up Fox's Ridge on that hill. And, you know, like I said, the ideal situation of stopping on flat ground and getting started again just doesn't happen all the time in the town of Acton.
They use them a lot over on New Bridge going up to Young's Ridge, a lot over there.
Familiar with that location?
Yes.
But this looks like they must have known this beforehand, this number two paragraph.
Change out of the buses.
They must have known this long before because of the swap out of the buses this year. You know what I mean? This isn't new that they didn't know about it.
And the only, the only reason that came to light is because when I went and stopped the bus driver down the driveway and asked for the second time why we're not getting the buses up to a reasonable temperature, I didn't, as the bus took off, I didn't hear the, the chains rattling.
Right.
And that's common with, with those vehicles. So then I go by here and I look, only this spare bus had change on it, only this spare bus had Acton's name on it. And that's all required in the contract.
It says in here that there's only one Acton bus that doesn't have Acton signage on it. And that would be corrected by this front end.
Yeah, we did account, yeah, we did account this morning at the, when the students were coming in, and the five buses, three said Acton and two did not.
Okay, see, I had looked at it last week.
So they were using a different one.
Well, if you're rolling in another for service, it will say, "First student, not Acton."
Right.
But she says that by Friday, all the Acton buses will be back on task, well, and all these things that are said are for, that go partway, halfway, whatever, are for me to do, exercise my administrative capabilities and abilities. I, like Richard, are, I'm very truck oriented, so I mean, look it in the suit, but I am. So, and all the, every Massapeusik bus that I see every morning, I see a lot of those because I drive on 202, they all have the hanging emergency chains.
Yeah, a lot of rural school districts are going to them because, number one, a simple stop on a hill, not getting going, could save 20 minutes and a half, because you're not going to take a bus, you know, with full of kids or half full of kids, even a two or three, and back down that hill safely. No, I mean, that, if I, if I was in charge in a situation like that, running the bus company, the bus, the bus driver would be terminated. It's not safe to do something like that, period.
So I think maybe we need to make some recommendations, requests of Ken in responding to, to these issues that we're not really happy with all the responses that we have. I think we need to say that the, the school committee agrees that the buses need to be idled for a longer period of time and in checking the laws, we find that that's very legal to do, to, to get the buses up to a decent temperature. I think we need to be on task really following up, what is, what is the timeframe for the drop down change? What dates are they intended to be? Can they check with the company and see when they're going to be delivered, when they're going to be available? Because we're already starting to get slippery roads in Acton. And the last part, we'll just kind of wait and see if they, if all the buses say Acton. That's, that's not a real safety issue, that's a, that's a part of the contract. It's important that they follow up on that, but I think those two...
Could I make a, a suggestion to the board? It's a, a couple of weeks away from Christmas break and we're so late in the season as far as the change, that I think a reasonable amount of time is when they come back from the Christmas break, the change should be in place and properly operating.
That makes sense.
I don't think that's an unreasonable length of time considering where we are in December.
I think we could make the request that it be no later than, and then if they come in, because if otherwise, you know, if they come in in the meantime, as soon as possible, but no later than when school resumes after the Christmas break.
Yes, that's why I wrote that down.
Anybody else have anything to, that we should add to that?
The only thing that jumps to my mind, you may not want to add it, this past week, we called just a first student due to concern about the driver driving too fast, slammed on the brakes and skidded around five feet or so on the ice a few days ago. So, but took care of it, they said they're going to respond, so, but if we're talking about safety, that was another one. That's a parent hat coming on.
Yes.
But it seems, it seems to be a bit in parcel.
You were there watching, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was the first issue I dealt with based on hearing that information.
So, probably not appropriate for this one, but it's...
But thanks for reminding us.
Yeah.
Safety is, you can never remind us too much about safety.
That's it.
Does that all sound good to you, Richard?
Thanks, Rich, for coming in with that.
So we'll have an update next, I missed, yeah, next time. Thank you, Ken, for doing that.
We don't need to vote on that, do we? I think we're just, we're just ask the superintendent to follow up with those recommendations.
All that being said, if you folks don't mind, I have an early stat in the morning tomorrow.
Good seeing you.
Thank you for coming, ladies.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay, yep.
You'd probably like those buses to be a little warmer too.
Yes.
Okay, let's move on now with our agenda.
Let's see, we have communications and correspondence just a minute.
Do we have all the comments from the public? No, okay. Communications and correspondence.
Okay. There are a couple of things that I'm going to pass out today that I didn't have in the packet over the weekend, but I think they're, not that we want to overwhelm you with things, but it's good reading. This one I was, I found particularly fond of, this is something that I showed Kevin. This is a reprint of the eighth grade exit exam from Washington State in 1910. And what's interesting about this is that in 1910, eighth grade was the benchmark as far as years of public education. People that went on for high school were in the minority and like my grandmother and grandfather. My grandmother went four years of high school and in her last year of high school, she took the teacher course to become a teacher. And what, many things have changed about education, but, but when you look at what a student was responsible for as an eighth grader, it really is quite amazing. And I have given this to administration here and I happen to have given it to Mr. Noel, our math teacher, and he was a bit astounded that an eighth grader could answer the math questions that are in the arithmetic thing. But it doesn't mean that, that these aren't important things for students to learn, but I think we all realize that an eighth grader had to go out in the world in 1910. An eighth grader here goes to high school. But it is fun to read.
Thank you.
And the other thing that I'm bringing is that I'm a firm believer in history and what I'm dropping off here is what I have written on this sheet here on the easel. What I would like to mention, and these, these things are typical of that, is that sometimes things come all the way full circle and back again. We're going to be discussing for a few minutes the article that Kevin is very fond of and will help us go through that article again. And it talks about some new philosophies of education. But if you go to what Tryon Edwards said in the middle 1800s, Tryon Edwards was, is a well-written congregational theologian, a minister at the Second Congregation in London, Connecticut, and mindful of the fact that in 1800s and 1700s, some of the most, most, best educated people in this country were the theologians. And they were to, not only did Yale and Harvard and Princeton graduate a lot of ministers, but the ministers ministered life examples too, not just, say, Christian examples or religious examples. But this one I thought, that I came across, was particularly telling, "Thoughts lead on to purposes, purposes go forth into actions, inaction, actions..." to purposes, purposes go forth into action, inaction, actions form habits, habits define character, and character fixes our destiny. What we're embarking on for our strategic plan is to take those thoughts and put them into action, basically. And that's what he said. You can't change anything until you think about it enough to make things go into action and then have that action form the habits. So it's very pertinent, I think, to our discussions ongoing on the strategic plan. The next one's a little bit shorter, but it is really education oriented. To awaken interest and kindle enthusiasm is a sure way to teach easily and successfully. Creating the environment where they're interested in learning and they're enthusiastic about learning is a much quicker way to get the accomplishment done, as it says, to teach easily and successfully. And then the third thing that is part and parcel to our strategic plan about having all of our educators and our administrators raise the bar. And as we said, as he said, people never improve unless they look to some standard or example higher and better than themselves. You can't go to the next level unless you visualize it, plan it, and when you have reached that next level, you continue to look for a new level beyond that. So again, this is mid 1800s from a minister who's telling us that our strategic plan is the right way to bring the, bring the learning to the levels that we need it to be now and over the next five years of our strategic plan. So enough philosophy on my part, but I just, as I said, sometimes old is new again.
Did you have that just on your do?
Oh, right.
I'm kind of sleeping on the job. I'll carry it away if I was saying. Okay, then let's move on to, thank you for that, Ken. Let's go on to our superintendent's report.
All right. Thanks to the assistance and shared ideas from Kevin Burks, I have slightly adjusted the Acton Strategic Plan and again operate to the school committee for the consideration and hopeful approval. We have put the activity in full motion. And I wrote this before I knew about this quote. Anyway, with all teachers and administrators submitting their goals, individual or team goals that must be aligned with the strategic plan that was presented on 11, 12, 13. So what I'm saying is even though we as a board haven't actually moved to accept the strategic plan, most of it's in motion, shall we say, needs to be. In preparing the 12, 10 school committee for this meeting, Kevin has requested that we all read the What Is a Professional Learning Community article again, so that we can discuss this important topic. The next topics for me are budget related. Budget preparations for the 14, 15 budget are already underway, and your administrators have been briefed on the expected impact with the new payroll contracts, plus the medical and transportation increases on the upcoming budget. We have started the process by developing a budget with all the known cost increases. And as I mentioned to my administrative counsel, very much in life, you operate on an 80/20 philosophy. Eighty percent of the costs of running the district are in 20% of the line items. Those 20% of the line items, you know very well. Just like in business, 80% of the business sales are usually in 20% of the customers, the big customers. And what we know is that we can put together a budget pretty quickly with the knowns that we have, as I said, teacher contract and some good estimates on medical. So what I said is that we meant to roll up the budget that includes all programs and staff in place. And that's what you do in a roll-up budget. You say, what's it going to cost you for the, the just business as usual status quo of the way that the school is run? So, but we have to, and we have to take a look at that in light of enrollment numbers. It's administration's combined opinion that we will need to present a final budget on late March that does have an increase. The level of that increase is currently being debated internally. If we were to raise the bar in line with the strategic plan, we need to accentuate and fund the programs that will bring the desired results. If the enrollment projections do not point, or excuse me, they do point to the need to make our education delivery more efficient, which we think they do, those options are going to be considered as well. So we're saying that we may have to have an increase in the budget, but we're saying that that's after we take a serious look at how the enrollment level, what it dictates for staffing. The next item is, as we mentioned, as Joy mentioned in a previous report to the school committee, we're weighing the needs and costs of establishing a student support center in the school building. Joy will offer our plans for establishing such a program in the new business section of the meeting. She's been working with Andy a little bit, and so we look forward, and Trish too, and we look forward to hearing what they have to say. And to advertise a little bit for the musical things coming, we look forward to the first student music presentation and the concert schedule for tomorrow night, and followed by another on Tuesday, the 17th, and hope you all will attend. I'll be there. The holiday season is already upon us. My personal hope for the new year is that the Acton School Community will continue to value the wonderful work being done by the students and their teachers, and that the residents' votes in the spring show their confidence in the programs and their belief that good education truly matters. So that was my editorial comment.
Very good. Thank you, Ken.
Okay.
Okay, progress monitoring reports. Let's go to the strategic plan with modification, and you have a copy of that. Acton School Strategic Plan, seven goals.
What I'd like to mention is that when Kevin and I met, Kevin asked if he could, and you suggested it would be good for both of us, and the administration agrees with what Kevin suggested, the first goal had been fleshed out a little more than the rest of the goals. It was a goal, but it said how it will happen. Now, how it will happen is really the goal planning template. So if you look at what's missing here on item one, learners will reach or exceed the school, state, and national standards. What's missing is what we added in italics to the goal, when the activities, it says, where it says, since it will require the combined efforts of all those that deliver and manage the curriculum and the assessments. So that's, that we moved that from a goal to an activity to reach the goal. So we, administration was in agreement that that made more sense because all the other seven goals, the other six on top of that, set goals, but didn't have the vehicle. The vehicle was, needs to be on the planning sheets. Anyone have any questions about that change?
No, that's where it should be, and we need to do that.
And I thank Kevin for.
Because everything is built around number one. Everything, everything is built on goal number one.
Kevin might mention, or one or all mention, that we talked about when do we put a percent in there? In other words, the achievement percent.
You're reading my mind.
And we talked about that too administratively. When we have the results of the assessments and the new test methodology, we want to see what that is and use that as a baseline. So when we see what those, what that, what those tests are this year, we would like to then adjust this, this goal each year based on the statistics and the information that we receive, or as we analyze the information.
Right, so it really doesn't belong in this goal, but in the strategic plan of the SMART goals, every year, that should be addressed, whether it's increased by 5% or you actually are putting a number of like 75 or 95%, something like that. So we'll have to be able to adjust it. We are looking at a change even in the assessment at the standard. So you've got more than one way of measuring that. So to put it here means every year, you're going to have to pre-approve the strategic plan piece. So, but in the subcategories, we're going to have to look at, are we talking about the state standards would be one thing. And again, we've got kneecaps, but we're changing over to smarter balance. So we don't know what those will be.
So clarifying question then, because I agree, but I'm not sure I'm fully in agreement. So with the strategic plan, is this a five-year strategic plan or is this a one-year strategic plan?
Aye.
Gotcha. So what I'm suggesting perhaps as an alternative, and maybe we discuss it, is so for five years, like I totally agree, like as we get new data every year, you want to plan so that your growth can be demonstrated, so that each year we're setting reasonable targets. But when we're talking about the five-year vision, when we say learners will reach or exceed the school, state, and national standards, what's our five-year vision? Do we want all students meeting or exceeding? Do we want 90%? What are we hoping to drive towards? We're not expecting that this year, next year. But you see what I mean? So it's like, what, we have, there's a final destination. What is that final destination we're shooting for? But then as we plan incrementally each year, we adjust what our benchmark will be from year to year, given our baseline, given, let's say, it's reading a 60% right now, and we want to be at 95%. What's a reasonable target for this year or next year? And then you can plan accordingly. But if this is a five-year plan, I think in a way, it's in alignment with the vision. What is our vision goal-wise strategically? Because it really sets up what are our expectations for our kids. Sometimes it's 100, sometimes it's 95, sometimes it's 90, sometimes it's 85. And maybe we want to be vague, or maybe we don't want to sort of box ourselves in a corner, which I think sometimes happens. That's what I mean to say. But as a, as a committee, we can't monitor this one yet, because if we have 40% or 50% or 60%, learners are still exceeding or achieving. So we will always have met this goal regardless of the data. So that's why I'm, I would see, what do we want for five years? I don't know if we've ever, have we had that conversation?
No, we haven't. I think it's, I think it's a little premature to know exactly what we want in five years until we see the measure of growth that we're taking.
But I think you can, but not today. Here's the thing.
I agree with, yeah.
What are you going to use for the measuring tool? Based on what standards? So if you're using the NWA scores, I can tell you where they've been in the last three years. So then you can look ahead. But if it's kneecaps, it's going to be different. And the smarter balance, I could tell you if I already knew how we're doing the first round. So, and that's just those are the standardized tests. But we're talking about local, which are not necessarily standard.
Correct.
And we don't have a universal common assessment K to eight. So we would have to, we could say 90%, but somewhere along the line, we have to say based on, and you know, so somewhere that looks backed up on, using what measurements, at what grade levels.
Absolutely.
Because not all data is available at all grade levels.
And that's, I think, what Trish is saying is excellent and right on the money. And that's, I think, one of the reasons why we altered the agenda in the sense of how we do the committee meetings. That would be a wonderful thing to do in the next, in a next meeting. What is some baseline data? And we could have a, because again, this is not going to happen all at once, but I think what you're saying is a really good next step. What baseline data do we have? So maybe the strategic monitoring for an upcoming session sooner than later would be, let's look at some baseline data and start getting a sense of what do we want for reading, or writing, or math, or science, five years down the road, based upon some data.
Data that we already have.
Say it again?
Data that we already have.
Yep. We have data, some newer than others, but we have data. We have more, I can describe more data than we, schools have more data than they know what to do with. But, and that's where I sort of see this, why I'm so impressed with this work, is that it's, that conversation will help refine the, you know, where we want to get. And then we'll have harder data to sort of, when new data comes in, we can sort of see, are we making progress? And we can have really strategic specific conversations. So that would be a recommendation I would make is maybe at the next meeting, actually look at some baseline data in, I would say, in one area. Because the other question too is, will reach or exceed state, national schools, school, state, national standards? That's a lot too. You're talking reading, writing, math, science, social studies, and then you've got other subjects, and they all matter.
And that would all vary.
They do. And they all have different measurement tools. It's a lot easier to do with reading and math. It gets a little, then science, and then the others get really tricky.
I agree. One per month. Certainly, we should be able to do that.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Very great.
I don't know why we can't do all learners. I mean, don't we always want 100%?
100%?
That's the growth, yes.
That's what we want, of course.
So that's our goal for five years. In five years from now, whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Is that unrealistic?
It might be, but it's a great goal.
But then it reminds me of that.
Didn't I say about?
But that's what goals are. Something to reach for. It's not, you know.
I don't want to be, you know, because I know we've got a lot of things to cover. But for an example, if you're looking at AYP, every year I give you back the AYP report. So if I recall, last year's based on, again, I think it's the kneecaps that are being used for the AYP measurement at this point, which smarter balance will be replacing. I think math is somewhere around 63 or 65% for the school overall. Where the language arch is something like 72%. So both those scores met or exceeded the state standards. We have never missed AYP in the general language. But can I expect, and not even all students take that test. So to say that they're all going to meet a certain percentage in that particular test is where it gets difficult. So you have to be, the difference between making progress, you know, 3% increase of progress or 5% versus an overall, based on what? So I can tell you that there are kids that don't take those tests. So I can't tell you 100% kids are going to meet something that they don't even have access to. So it's not impossible. It's just not black and white right now. And I would want to have that conversation before we put a number on. And it should be something like 90, 95% as your goal. You will never get 100%, 100% of the time. But that doesn't mean we don't strive for every child, because I've often said, you don't know which child is going to surprise you and exceed where you had put the things out. But the data isn't so available in so many places, as Kevin said. I mean, I can have the DRA scores. I can have the running record. I can have the NWAs, the kneecaps. You know, we have to determine that measurement so that we can actually be successful. So I don't, I'm afraid of not being clear. And I want to make sure we can make a commitment to something we clearly understand.
And you know, we've been happy to make AYP. Well, A stands for adequate. That's it, okay? And we've been happy to be.
Adequate yearly process.
AYP, adequate yearly process, and I think progress. And I think, you know, we need to set our bar higher and set our goals higher than just adequate. It's, I mean, it's great to meet adequate because a lot of schools don't. But we have done it every year. And part of our funding is, is based on meeting AYP as well, from the federal government anyway, I believe, right? So, yeah, I think we, we do need to have that discussion, figure out how we're going to measure all kids in each, in a subject area, and then set our goals high. Yes, Joy?
I think it's really important to measure individual student progress as well, especially considering proficiency-based learning, where students are going to be allowed more time and to demonstrate their learning in the way that they can do, do that best. So I think that while we're measuring overall progress and our success, we should also be able to collect that data for individual students, because I think that's critically important, particularly for students with special needs and students on individualized programming. So.
That's one of the tenants in the professional learning community memo that we have to discuss.
And particularly for students who learn better, more effectively with hands-on type situations, those aren't going to show up necessarily in a written standardized test.
Can I just add something to, because I was fortunate enough to attend the Learning and the Brain Conference, which was a wonderful three-day conference that I attended in mid-November. And a lot of focus was on experiential learning and hands-on learning, and the kids are more successful when they have those experiences, many students. And also, the environment, living in an environment of nature and with lots of greenery, and we're fortunate enough to live in the country where we have that, the green and the nature around us all the time. us all the time. Students do much better with that. I mean, there's a lot more, and I plan on preparing some kind of report for you, because I think it was an incredible conference, and I feel very grateful that I was allowed to go to that conference.
Are we ready to vote on our strategic plan? If so.
It's in the unfinished business later. You can vote for any time, or?
Well, we got it here, we're talking about it.
And I think, I got, again, I'm really impressed with what's been accomplished in such a short time. What would we be voting on?
Just to accept this plan as, as in this print, as a beginning for our strategic plan. I mean, if we need to make adaptations and adjustments to it as we go along, that's fine, but this will be a basis.
Gotcha.
For getting that started, and for, for the community to know what our strategic plan is, what, what we're trying to do.
Just as an aside, it helps me administratively to know that you're all behind this effort 100%, because if some teachers felt that you folks were a little wishy-washy about it, or weren't sure it was the right methodology, or whatever, it might be hard for us to pursue this. So we're looking for you to put a good, good housekeeping sample of approval.
Yeah, so I would recommend that, and I like that. The way I look at it is, again, impressed, I think this work always has to be done in the spirit of constantly trying to achieve precision. So I recommend that, because, as Kay mentioned before, as a board, I think we need to support, so that the, the good work can continue, but also sort of with the understanding that it's, I'm recommending approval, with the understanding that constantly in a process of refinement and precision. I don't want to send the message that it's done. It's never done, and it's acted like, kind of like what Tricia was saying before, next time we meet, if we look at, if we spend some time really looking at Goal One, spending some time on Goal One, which is the province, when we look at the SMART Goal page, that's one of the goals that the committee can help provide guidance around. We may, through that conversation, looking at Goal One in regards to reading with some baseline data, kind of like what Joy was mentioning too, is there's a lot of talk here, and in regard, we were talking a little bit in regards to, well, we want all students to demonstrate growth. That's different than all students meeting standards. This goal doesn't have any growth language in it. So after that conversation, we may refine that to say, all students will meet or exceed the standards. Or we might refine it to, all students will demonstrate growth, 90% will meet or exceed the standards. That's, that's in a better, that might be in a better place, we might feel that's better, but based upon the conversation and data. So long-winded response to, I would recommend approving, given we can continue to refine.
And you don't have to write all that down.
Judy?
Yeah.
The motion that I have, and Kami, it sounds okay. Kevin made the motion to accept the Act in School Strategic Plan with the understanding of constant revision.
That sounds good.
Can you speak for me from now on?
I'll say.
Kevin and Mary. Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Can we move that board there?
It's like the Oz.
Behind door number one.
Behind door number one. Okay, it's been moved by Kevin, seconded by Mary, that we accept the Act in School Strategic Plan with the understanding that it will be under constant revision. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so moved.
I just want to say thanks again for the work done on this. I think there's a lot of work here, and it's well done.
Let us start with Kim.
Well, first of all, I will up with Bill Hall, even though he's not here tonight. He did come in as we're working on the Blackboard software. We were going through the journal ledger to make sure.
Anyone need a copy? Excuse me.
What is that?
That's hers, but anyone need a copy if you don't see?
We have it.
You all have it?
Yeah, I think it was in your, in your, thanks.
Sorry about that.
Anyway, I was, I did meet with Bill Hall a couple days ago, and we did go, we started working on our GL to get it ready. We do have the beginning trial balance for July 1st, and after everything is set up, we'll probably just put journal entries to get to the month that we start, and then we'll go forward from there. And I, you know, I think the audit is pretty well finished. It's with the town, it's on their plate, I guess at this point. He was going to just talk about certain things with the audit. We had a couple little housecleaning things, we have to make sure things are signed and things like that, but other than that, we were pretty good. So, and as, as part of my report, yes, we, we have started Blackboard. We've got it up and running to the point of implementing the GL, but at the same time, we're also doing all the budgetary things. We do have Vite article, we've calculated out everything for salaries, hourly pay. I did the insurances today, so that way, each, each head of department, as we're going along, they keep getting a sheet, or they will be getting a sheet, that says, this is what you had last year, this is what we have already projected for this year, and here's the rest of, you know, certain mine items. And we'll build upon that to end up with our total, and then divide that to figure out our EPS, and know where we stand before we even present it to you guys. And there'll be a lot of different scenarios, you know, we'll, we'll look at that when we, when we come up with a number. And, and again, we'll still work hard on that before we even present it to you guys.
So Kim, you're already using the new program for?
No.
For any of the budget stuff, or are we still doing it all in Northern Data right now?
We're all, the budget is all done basically in Excel.
In Excel?
Yeah. Yeah, it's all Excel. With Blackboard, I have an appointment on Christmas Eve, which I'll spend all day Christmas Eve with my girl, Amanda, and we are actually going to confirm everything we do with the GL. That's why I had Bill beforehand, because I wanted to know, this is how I've got it set up, you know, looking at what's required by the state, so I make sure I have my programs, my objects, my control, revenue, and expense controls set up right. And, and he was happy with every, he's just happy. He was like, yes, move. And so when I talk with Amanda on Christmas Eve, it'll be just to confirm the setup that I have in place. ARAP will go quick, and then I have block, a week block, set up just for payroll. Payroll's going to be the longest process.
But it'll start January 1st, then? In the new system?
It's either going to be January 1st or February 1st.
Oh, okay.
And, and I'd rather see everything start February 1st, because I'd rather have payroll up and running completely, and then start with the first part in February.
Yeah.
As much as I would have liked to see January, I just, and, and to put in the payroll information for W2s is not a big deal.
Yeah.
But I'd want it to be, I want to know that every step, we've got exactly what we need set up right, so it'll be a smooth transition. And they're very good about, you know, going through every process with us, so we'll get there. But meantime, we still have to do the data-based stuff, and we've got it, you know, we feel pretty good about it. We, we've, we've got everything ready for an audit for our grants, which will be coming up in a few months. We made sure we had all the paperwork ready for that. We had to do some person ones that we've had this year, and we just got paid for everything, so we know that went through good. And, and we'll be looking at new grants for the next coming year. That's our, another thing that we have on our plate too, to see if we can find either some literacy grants, things like that, to, to supplement our budget for next year.
Very good, very good.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for Kim?
Good work.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you for all your work on that.
And marking Christmas Eve.
Yeah. Santa will probably bring you something special for that one. At least he should, right? Ah, let's see. Tricia?
Well, I'll skip to the third thing that mentions School Spirit Week. Today was Decades Day, so you are seeing my costume at the end of a long day of dressing back like the 80s. Tomorrow's Neon Day, Thursday Twin Day, Friday Dress-Up Day. It's been a lot of fun, a lot of staffs participating this year, and it keeps the kids smiling for sure. I have a lot in my report summarized, the new preschool on Thursday morning's BAM, books, art, and music has started. We had 15 preschoolers come on Thursday.
I needed to know the age. When can it, can a two-year-old come?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I circled that, wrote Liz, and gave it to her, and she's.
Yep. So they had book time, they had music time, they had hands-on activity, and the energy was a riot. I mean, it was just great. It was just buzzing. Wonderful, absolutely wonderful.
Fifteen's a great turnout.
Oh, my goodness.
Really good.
It was awesome, really awesome. So very excited about that, and, you know, it'll just be one more link to the community that I want to see happen here. So did anybody have any particular questions about anything?
Will that go, the BAM, will that, is that a monthly thing?
No, every Thursday.
Every week?
Every Thursday, yep.
That's awesome.
Yep. So again, it's, it's combined effort of three of the specialists, and allowing for access to students before they get here, so if there's any, actually any concerns, OTP, T's, speech, anything like that, we'll be talking with parents, inviting them and informing them of what's going on in the school. Again, I'm really trying to reach both ends of the spectrum of the community, with my seniors, as well as my preschoolers. And, you know, even just having that conversation with them on Thursday, the turnout for the Polar Express movie night of PTG was three times the amount than last year. So Saturday, here, many of us were in our pajamas.
How many did you end up having, like around 100?
It's hard to say, because it was whole families that came. It wasn't just like a couple of kids, you know? They, they say it was definitely three times, I would say kid-wise, probably about 50 kids. Because we had hot chocolate and popcorn and bells, and I was grateful, my two youngest, my twins came and helped troubleshoot with Jim, Jim Wood, one of our custodians, on the technical thing. My computer froze just before we started. I just, the 15-year-olds here, fix that please, Mom needs you. But the turnout was fabulous, and again, the positive energy, I mean, the families loved it, the kids loved it. I was told I even looked cute in my pajamas, so.
Why didn't you wear the uniform tonight, then? So everybody could see.
Because it's DAV's day.
It was Decades Day today, so. And honestly, the funny thing is, is a couple of the kids even said, but Mrs. Bovin, you hate pajama day. And I said, I know, so you've got to understand, I did this for you. Because this has killed me. But, you know, again, the heart and soul of the, of the community should be the school. And it was just one more example of a lot of people coming out to make it feel that way. I mean, the hot choc, they wrote letters to Santa. I mean, it's just, it was great. It was just so adorable. So that was just really wonderful. And having that connection with the preschool parents on Thursday allowed for more people to know about it who maybe are not in the loop at the current time. So we got email addresses, we're going to make an email folder for those preschool parents, so we can let them know when things are happening. So again, building that community bridge, so really exciting. And then I gave you samples, I hope you could understand the Common Core wrap-ups.
Mm-hmm.
I asked those two students.
Warm-ups or wrap-ups?
What's that?
Warm-ups.
Warm-ups, sorry, warm-ups. What it really does is, is again, as I told even some of my teacher leaders today, you know, whether it's main learning results or Common Core, really, the title of the curriculum doesn't matter. What matters are the students' learning, and what are you doing about your teaching if they're not. So this is just another example of something that comes through my email, and I forwarded it to teachers, and I've got three teachers who are now using these exercises as a way of getting their kids to think beyond where they had in the past. It's really about pushing the students' learning. And I asked the students if I could use their work to share with you, and they were, of course, quite proud to be able to do that. So it's just, it's just one more way, I wish sometimes other people could see and feel the excitement I'm getting from the teachers who are, as we say, getting on the bus and finding their seat, because they're all headed in the direction of improving instruction. But it's just, it's, it's really exciting when you get this kind of concrete example back from the student work. And that's really what it comes down to. It's not what did the teacher teach, it is what did the students learn? And the students are getting better, K to A, at talking about what they're learning and why they're learning it, and showing you, I can go in the kindergarten room, and they can tell me what they're working on, and what they're going to be able to do with it. I mean, today I went into kindergarten, and they talked about nouns and verbs making sentences. These are five-year-olds. Pretty exciting stuff, and they could show me, they were making gingerbread, men, and they each had their gingerbread man, who was their noun, and they had a different verb, and they got it. And they were drawing pictures and writing stories about that. This is really amazing stuff, nouns and verbs in kindergarten. So I'm having a blast watching the kids learn and see the teachers grow. It's, it's just, I wanted to have you see a concrete example. You know, the training and the work we're doing is making a difference.
I like this, Guidance Delivers the Band-Aids. How does that work? How does it, how do you reach the kids with that program?
That's your best Kieran. She has guidance lessons every other week with all the classes, so you read it Week A, Week B, and you can see all through the walls, all up and down the school, the band-aids. We talk about the anti-bullying, and, and how to handle it, and what to do, you know, and not just be a bystander, and not just let things happen. So in her guidance lessons, each grade level has that conversation that's appropriate at their level, of what they can do when they see somebody being bullied. And so they, if you look at the Band-Aids, again, you'll also see the grade level ability, that, you know, what they're working on, what they're capable of doing, they drew a picture to match it, it was great.
And if, if any of you have never been here to see the Hampstead players, and you have the time tomorrow morning, you really should come and see them, because they're just, they're just so good. They're awesome. I can't come unfortunately tomorrow morning, because my husband has an appointment, but I love to come to those. Those and the Little Red Wagon, you know, those are just great things for the kids, and the kids learn from them, they get, they're interactive, and.
Yep.
It's amazing what they, what they do.
Yep, there it is.
With just a couple of people.
Yep, and I just gave a heads up that this is the year of an art auction, so any artist, creative, I'll let you start planning ahead.
They haven't had that for two years or so?
Two years ago was the first time in a long time Kami had brought it back. So it's on an every-other-year cycle, so this will be the second year after a long hiatus.
It was always good.
It was a phenomenal turnout two years ago, so I want to encourage people whoever.
What's the date then, again?
She, I don't have a date, it's usually sometime in March.
Okay, we've got some time.
But that's why, so anybody who's painting, or carving, or doing their work, has time to get their work ready.
And sell it.
And make some money.
Yep. It's, it's a great plan. Any other questions?
I have my paintings together.
Anybody have anything else to ask of Tricia? There's a lot going on. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Joy, Special Education.
Okay, the part of my report is really new business, so do you want me to just go, go for it right now, or wait till new business for that Student Support Center report? Just do it now?
Yeah, just do it now. Save it from later.
Well, this is about student programming, and as you know, I did report last time that we were looking at students, a student support center for our school. We have at least 16 students right now who require behavioral support in, along the continuum. And it's clear that we need training around that for the teachers and the educational technicians, as well as a location, so that these students, when they do have some kind of an event or an incident, and they need to be removed from the classroom, they can actually process and plan, and data could be collected, so that we can. And data could be collected so that we can help them get it back into the classroom as quickly as possible. As I said, we have sixteen students right now. Many of those students have behavior plans and we're in the process this year of tweaking all of those so that they're very specific, very clear, and that there's a script that anybody who is working with that student at the time can use. And they'll be training around how to implement each behavior plan. And I think reported last time that we have a consultant, an educational consultant. I've worked with this firm before. They're highly qualified skilled technicians in behavior analysis and helping us to prepare these programs. And we do an adequate job, but we need to do a very, very good job when we're working with these students to prevent out-of-district placements. So I feel with the assistance of our special ed teachers as well as the school psychologist and this educational consultant who will work with us this year, we can develop this program to the extent that we will be supporting kids to the best of our ability. And currently, I mean, this is all, we're still, you know, in the process of planning. So we're hoping that we can have a location at the K-35 end, K-235 end, and then also a location at 68, up in the middle school location. Because occasionally we do have students who are in crisis and we really don't want to have them be, moving them and escorting them all the way across the building. So we have two locations. Currently, we're looking at the Resource Room, the K-2 Resource Room, which has two large rooms that are connected. And also, there's a room down in the 68 wing that we can utilize as well. Again, this is in, you know, the preliminary stages. But we've been talking as a group about the absolute need for this. And just as an aside, this is the kind of thing that I have a lot of experience in doing and I know that it takes time to prepare it. And you can do something really quickly and then you're picking up the pieces on the other side of that. Have done that too, out of necessity. And it's never as effective if you take the time to plan and collect the data and really get those behavior plans specifically and well-honed so that we can carry them out. And I know that I have Tricia's support. We work really closely together on, and of course, with the whole administrative team, but particularly Tricia and I because we deal most directly with the students. So just giving you, we'll be giving you an ongoing report on how we're doing with this. And of course, we're going to utilize grant funds. And I really don't want to say exactly what the cost is. I have ballpark. But I'd rather wait and give you an exact figure when it comes to budget time so that I'm not making you anxious unnecessarily because we do have grant funding that we can utilize, so.
So each student would have its own script?
Well, yes.
Or will you have some of them have a generic script that could be used with more than one student?
Exactly. We have right now, we've been provided a template that we're tweaking for each student. So the, the educational consultant in this firm has provided a whole modular, a whole module for the program. And it's part of the consulting fee, which is very manageable. And I'm using grant funds to support that. It's a whole plan and process. It's very well-designed. These folks, William White Associates, have been doing it for a very long time. The person we're working with is a board-certified behavior analyst. It takes a lot of education and training to get that certification. And I worked with this firm, as I said before. A lot of times, the BCBA's, as they're called, work with students with autism. So I'm really thinking ahead because of, we do have some students with autism. But we're, I would expect in this day and age that we're going to have a larger enrollment in the future. So we want to be well-prepared for that as well. So I'm looking at this kind of multifaceted. But again, as your question, Judy Cheer's question, the behavior plan, there is a template and we fill that in very accurately, as accurately as we can. Right now, we're getting assistance from the behavior specialist, the educational consultant. She'll actually be here tomorrow. She meets with the team to make sure the draft that our people, our teachers have prepared meets the standard that she would expect. And then the script will be, in some cases, very similar because we want people to be trained in a consistent fashion so that, you know, an ed tech can go from one student to the next. And the plan, the process is all consistent with the student support program. So it's a very well-designed plan.
And what part is our school's psychiatrist, psychologist?
The psychologist is working very closely because she has the mental health piece and she's working with all of us as well. She's been part of every discussion and works with the behavior specialist. In almost every instance, we've had those discussions together.
Okay. I may be old-fashioned, but is there any point in time where a child is sent to the principal?
Well, that's part of the plan. Yes.
Or they're just going to go to the room. I don't know.
But that's part of the plan. But, you know, I have to say, and Tricia will, I'm sure, and many of you will agree, that the needs of students are changing. We have students with post-traumatic stress. We have students with various depression, bipolar disorder. We have a myriad of disorders and diagnoses. And we also have students who are homeless and who are, that is their post-traumatic stress. So we're dealing with, I would say, the results of a very strained economy and, you know, the uncertainty for kids and families. And as a result, kids are, I hate to say, just more, having more challenges and more difficulties.
More likely to act out.
Exactly.
But their acting out is not necessarily against the discipline policy. It can be just a self-meltdown. It can be a self-distraction issue that needs to be regrouping as opposed to...
Yeah, I still get visits.
Right.
I was like, wow. Tricia's job's gotten even.
I know. Part of that process is, I hate to say that last year, I think I made a comment that we really don't have any behavioral challenges. I'm using those words.
Never say that.
I mean, we did, at the end of the year, we experienced students who were having many issues, behavioral issues. But it was, it all seemed to emanate from uncertainty, mental health, all of those, you know, some disorders that were combined, some, as they call, comorbid conditions. So they might have oppositional defiant disorder, but also have depression that is just, you know, a significant, or a significant amount. What am I trying to say? The most disabling depression, that you can have. Clinical depression. So that's...
So that's not a discipline thing?
Right.
This is K through A.
This is K through A, yes. You know, I've seen this a lot in other school districts and schools. And it really, I would say, it's really evolving here. I don't think we saw as much of it when I first came. And I didn't bring it, I can guarantee you.
No, it's the times.
It's the times. It really is.
But I thought we had less than five out-of-district placements. That surprised me. You put out-of-district five.
Oh, well, because we just had, so one of those is a foster placement and not our responsibility in terms, many are not financially our responsibility. They're state agency clients. I can't give you too much information because it's kind of...
No, but I mean, it was like one and we were worried about one also. But then we said, "No, we can accommodate them here." And then I see five and I'm like, wow.
Right. And we have, I know that number changed because of students who moved in. And, you know, as I said, post-traumatic stress is a huge factor and difficult for us to manage without a lot of training. So that's what we're doing. And all educational technicians are being trained. And in the process, I think we've already addressed some of the behaviors, I would say, especially in the lower grades. But we're still seeing that we need to have that training. It's critically important. I want to be prepared and I feel we're holding our own right now.
So I think some of this has been answered because we've talked about this a number of times. So if I understand this correctly, basically what's going on, to put it in a nutshell, is that where, and it sounds like a lot of really good stuff is happening, we're working to increase and expand our capacity to provide a more robust set of services for students in need.
Absolutely. It's a good way to put it.
And it's a big shift. It sounds like there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of shifts taking place, particularly in regards to what we're doing, the capacity with which we're doing it, who is providing services locally here. Is that correct?
Yes.
What, because I know we've been talking about, what are some of the bigger, and this is purely just an understanding question, clarifying. What has prompted this shift? Because I know we weren't talking about this before. What are some of the key reasons behind it? Does that make sense?
I think this year in particular, our needing to respond in a much higher, the level has been just escalated to a large degree. I mean, I think we had more often, more intensity.
So there's been a manifestation of behaviors within the school that we haven't had the adequate, whatever resources, knowledge, know-how, capacity to address, and those have been escalating?
Right. And I think it's been building. I think we, you know, we were managing it last year and we had several students move in. I would say two or three very high-need students move in, or more, really, Trish.
Quite a handful.
Quite a handful. And then again, students who were here, who blossomed, if you will, in that behavioral aspect, you know, as they got older. So we're having to manage those behaviors. And again, we were just managing it and I feel we're really liable. We would suffer a great liability if we did not get this training and have this program because of the level of need.
We need to, yeah. So that makes sense. So that really helps. So internally, the things have been changing so that we need to meet the increased demands internally. To what extent, if at all, is some of this shift in programming also, and it may or may not be, and this is one of my confusions, knowing that we have out-of-district placements, as you make these changes, is one of our goals also to be able to provide services locally that in the past have we been farming out? Is that one of our goals too?
Yes. If we had the right staff and training, probably the last, well, I can't say that the last placement was, we needed to make that.
But even before Joy came aboard, even in the last five years, if we could have done better and understood more sooner than there's prevention medicine, you know, actions that could have been taken.
Better did before than after.
Right. So we know that it's not just a one-child fluke kind of thing. Well, we got through it. It's we have to be proactively addressing the needs of our kids.
Gotcha.
Get them academically where they need to be if the medical or the emotional are not there as well.
Gotcha. So two questions I have, because I think this fits really with the board because I have a policy question. But I want to make sure I understand correctly before I ask that question. But one other question. So as we make change in programming and as we increase our capacity to provide services that have been in the past been addressed and handled by outside agencies, what is the process to ensure that the quality that we will be providing here is equal to, if not better than, what they might have been doing? Like, I don't understand the logistics of that. That's more of a technical question.
Well, I think that...
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because I think what we're doing, because I love it. I think it sounds great. I think it's awesome. How do we know it's, because it sounds like we're working a lot of outside agencies too.
Yes. I mean, here's the thing. We can provide the academic rigor that is not always present in the outside facilities. I've been doing this for a really long time. And it's not that they don't try. It's that they have many students with behaviors.
Gotcha.
So they're always addressing that. And the role models aren't there for kids to have that. I mean, typically when students come here and they have some behaviors, they do really well. However, we're finding that we need to provide that other piece, that more specific crisis intervention that could happen. Happen easily, quickly. Student can plan and can process and be back in classroom. And I also think that students who are placed, you know, the, as I said, the rigor, they're not held to the same standard.
Of academic learning.
Of academic learning. I mean, I think, and I don't know if they're actually, how well they're embracing the Common Core. So we really need, we're responsible for our students. We're responsible for our students whether they are there in any of the, like the Sweetser program or the Maplestone, and I think they do a really great job. But they also don't have, you know, they're not, they don't have the academic piece that we might have.
So as we shift, or as, because we're worried about them not receiving the academic support and the high level of rigor that they'll need for the academic needs, as we take on more of the special service needs, similar to my question, and I don't know if this is a certification thing, or where as we handle more of their students locally, we'll be better able to address their academic needs. But then we'll also be more responsible to deal with their other needs that other programs are certified and trained and specialized in dealing with, which we previously haven't had the capacity. Is there certification in the sense of where, and the reason I ask this is, I've seen in the past, for example, and I just, again, this is purely, I don't understand, so I want to understand, is for example, early on I was trained to work with students with dyslexia. And I'm not saying this here at all, but public schools, because it's really expensive. I worked at a school that was trained and specialized in working with kids with dyslexia. Very few public schools would send the students there and they would say, "We can do it." But they really didn't have the capacity to. It sounds like we're really doing our due diligence and we're doing the right things. How do we know that, I feel like we can do a better job. But is it like, does the state of Maine sort of, will there be, is there an audit?
They're conducting an audit right now.
That's my question, is how...
And they will, you know, they audit how students are progressing. They...
So they'll be able to look at the programs and say, "These are..."
They're going to be looking at IEPs.
These meet the standards for these kinds of searches, kids with autism or kids with bipolar, sort of thing. Okay.
There's a standard we need to meet for the DOE.
Gotcha. And that's my question. So that leads to my policy question. It sounds like we're shifting in our policy that, and do we have policies in the sense of, it seems what's changing and it sounds like it's a good thing, that we now as an institution are making decisions to work with students in a greater capacity than we've done in the past? That sounds like a policy change.
Kevin, can I interrupt?
Is that right?
This really isn't. This is really doing, providing our due diligence. We need to provide a continuum of services. If we don't have a continuum of services, we're actually not within the law. We have to provide a least restrictive environment. So if we don't have that capacity and we just send kids out, the Department of Education is going to come down and say, "Why haven't you tried this, this, and this?" And I just attended a conference on Friday with Eric Harland and that was a key piece of talking about kids with behaviors. We have to provide, we're obligated to provide programming to the best of our abilities so students are in the least restrictive environment and not placed in a school that is segregating them, you know, and I do want...
Oh, yeah, I get the least restrictive piece, but a school can't provide every single service to students.
And not active.
But it's not...
I think, you know, a larger school system would already have all these services in place. But I think because we're small, then if we're going to add this piece, then we need the training to add. I mean, we have a smaller staff, you know, we don't have all the specialists that are in-house or in-system, so.
But we've also been able to handle the occasional without having a systematic approach. We're now saying, "We can't handle the occasional. We need a systematic approach." Much like RTI. If we can catch them sooner and do a better job, then we can prevent them from falling further behind. We can prevent some of the greater problems that end up with kids in the middle school or high school level.
So, and Pierre, I'm ignorant here. It just, so with this sort of thing, we don't need to state or have policy stating what service... sort of thing, we don't need to state or have policy stating what services we're equipped to deal with?
No.
And what services we don't for determining out of, out of service.
We have to provide whatever it is, is required for the student that's here at the time.
And if it can't be provided here-
Here, then it's okay.
Then it has to go somewhere else.
Sorry for all that, but that, I feel like I have a much better understanding of all that now, thanks.
And I think this is, this is a program that is, the ultimate is for the student to be in the regular classroom. It's really just to come and plan and process. And the behavior person, if we, so, you know, if we should pursue this, that whoever is manning that student support center is, is there to help students and staff get the student back to the classroom as soon as possible. It's all about being in the regular classroom and, you know, our full inclusion. That's the push.
No, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have policies that were contradicting that or weren't fully in support of that, so if something were to happen down the road.
Yeah.
I want to make sure policies are in line. If there's significant shifts happening, sometimes the policies don't follow suit and then we get ourselves into a contradiction.
Right. Well, especially if you worked in a private school, that there's, they're under, you know, for the dyslexia, that there's a different standard. You have to, you have a lot of-
Yeah. And that was, this was, yeah, a good, a good number of years ago, but the, no, thank you. I apologize for that digression, but-
No, I'm glad you had the questions, because I think it's to clarify for some people.
Information, because it's a work in process.
Good stuff. Really good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's, it's actually a smart goal.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Anything else from Joy?
Just, I did add also the student enrollment, and you saw that as part of it. And I think that's all that I have to share.
This chance means, this chance means that.
Thanks, thanks.
Yes.
Okay, Andy?
Doesn't have to go there anymore.
One of the things that I did for you folks this month was I attached a list of capital improvement projects that have been completed from 2007 to 2013. And I did this for a couple of reasons. Number one, with the budget season coming up, I wanted to look at where we've been and where we're going, and also wanted to demonstrate to the rest of the committee some of the items that the long-term planning committee is involved with and works on. As you can see, there's, there's 12 items on the list. I think it also demonstrates the, the strong support that we've received from the community, especially in some of the budget years where things were very lean. We have consistently invested in the school and consistently made upgrades, whether it be for safety, efficiency, regular maintenance. We've been very fortunate. And also on this list, it doesn't include the upgrades that Mike has done in the computer lab. The computer lab was rewired and reworked a couple of years ago. That was a pretty significant improvement. And it also doesn't include the investment that we made last year with the new library chairs and the cafeteria tables. So, I just put that in there as, just to review some of the, the main items that we've been able to achieve. What we're looking at potentially for the next year ahead is going to be repairing some of the concrete walkways outside that have deteriorated over time. And then the other item that I had mentioned before to the committee will be replacing the other air conditioning unit in the computer lab over the summer months. Those are the two items that I'm looking at for the next budget cycle.
When you, when it says repair and reconstruction of storm, storm damage, is that when we put, is that when they had the new culvert put in?
Yeah, that was a result of the Patriots Day storm.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions for Andy about his report?
Do you have this surveillance and security on the list?
Yes.
I have that on the list, but we have discussed, and it's an ongoing discussion as far as updating, you know, what, what we've invested into our phone and camera security system. We're looking at the possibilities of building upon that system, adding more cameras. We've talked about a swipe card system to enter the building. So, there's a number of items that potentially might come before the committee in the future. The other thing too is, when you think security, the security system itself, or the old security system, which is like the keypad, which has got all your security codes for entering and leaving the building, trouble codes, that system is quite outdated. That's a separate system from the phone system and this camera system. And at some point in time, we're going to have to consider looking at that and looking at replacing that as well. Because each year, when they come and work on it, they call it a dinosaur of a system. It's, you know, it's over 20 years old.
What's around your neck there? Just an ID badge?
Yes.
But if, if you guys carry these things, then that could be a swipe card, like you said.
Yeah. We, and we've discussed doing that.
You got hope for that, actually, if you're gonna?
We need it.
What they do in hospitals.
Really? I'll keep that in mind.
Maybe we could get a grant.
Fred, I was just at the Paul School. Maybe you have it here. I was there the other day in Wakefield. They have a Kevlar, thin plastic, it, it just goes over the glass.
Bulletproof.
And it's just a thin sheet of Kevlar. It goes over the glass and it's bulletproof.
Hmm.
The, the principal saw the demonstration and-
The RSOs.
Put that on, long-term. Fifteen rounds and it didn't. I don't know how much it would cost, but something so simple, just to, I was, I was floored. I'm like, so the, it's all Kevlar? He's like, "No, it's just a, almost imperceptible thin sheet of Kevlar that they put right over the glass."
It's that strong.
Yeah. Well, I told you, when the two RSOs from Massapeach and Sanford came during a, a different situation, I, I gave them a tour of the big facility, where they'd never been to the acting before. And because they are, there are, they are the resource officers at the two high schools, as well as, you know, one's a deputy sheriff and one's a Sanford policeman, they had on their hand, just like that, all kinds of different things we could be doing for safety. And that was one of them. Just at the front doors type thing, because of, you know, again, it doesn't stop somebody completely, but it sure slows them down a lot. And, you know, those kinds of things. They, they gave me some other pointers that, you know, I've discussed with Ken, that when we have our crisis community, I mean, we're going to be looking at that, some real simple things for, for lockdowns. They go to trainings. They go to workshops and seminars on a regular basis. So, they come back with the latest and they analyze the latest incident and all that stuff. So, we will have to talk about what can be done, what's reasonable to be done. And they mentioned those, those sheets. They said you could shoot a two-by-four at the door, as if you could launch one through a gun kind of thing, and it would stop it. That's the kind of force. So, to, to shoot your way into the, the school would be quite a, a challenge. So, again, they talk about the high, the high areas. They, they gave other pointers as well. And I know I talked to Andy about some of them. It's just a matter of, of a little bit of time and money. I know, shocking, money.
But it is. I think a lot of it is looking at the information that's out there and making, you know, responsible decisions. You know, right, two years ago, we were like an open-door school building, you know. You, you like to keep that sense of community and you don't think about these things. But when you realize you've got to keep up with the times and keep up with the safety of the kids, it's, it's very important. So, you know, we've made some huge strides in the last couple of years, but we're going to be looking at, you know, the possibility and having discussions about upgrading other areas in the future. So, and then the last thing, I'd like to thank the Beeler family for donating the Christmas tree again this year. It's in memory of Brian Beeler. Trish spoke with Jan a short while ago, and I was able to go down this morning and cut a tree off the Beeler property and bring it up and set it up out front. And that's kind of become an annual tradition. And it's one of the things that I look forward to now at Christmas, is going to get the Beeler tree. So, it's lit tonight.
You guys write thank yous to them, yeah?
We have, yeah, we should.
Superintendent.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Andy?
Nope.
Let's move on to Michael.
Can I make my name short? What's on my list is, I've attempted to implement a new firewall function filter system, and it's failed with the help of their support. And I've discovered the failure and it's requiring me to redesign all of our systems from the ground up. So, with that being said, I'm not working on the website right now. But I have taken into consideration having comments once I do go live with it for the public on layout, design concepts. Also, with the website design, redesign, my goal is to make it more accessible. With that, I'm also looking to redesign and reorganize the Kids Corner section, which is an educational collection of resources and web links. I'm looking to redesign that and organize that, so it's easier to navigate and also hopefully may align with Common Core and targets. With Common Core, from my understanding, Brenna, Sandra, Packard, Brenna Whitney, Sandra Packard, and the specialists have successfully utilized Empredi Campus, Common Core standards, and the Standards-Based Report Card that we put together with the fifth grade. I haven't heard any complaints and it seems to be working smoothly. I've put into effect the groundwork for progressing this Common Core Standard-Based Report Card across K through eight. So, the stuff, the, the data is there. It's just a matter of, you know, starting to roll the grade levels, the teachers, the lesson plans, the, the, their actual learning into, in aligning it with Common Core, the standards in the report cards themselves. So, all, the groundwork has been, is in place and then now it's just a matter of, you know, progressing slowly. The new hardware and equipment for the virtualization server that I requested has been in place for a couple of weeks now. With it, I'm giving more headroom, so I can expand our technologies. And with that, I'm going to be upgrading the library curriculum server that keeps track of all these books, giving it more horsepower, more, you know, performance power. I'll also be doing that with a couple of other servers and introducing new technologies into the system integration. The old server is going to utilize as a storage facility for backups and et cetera. And we're still working on data collection and technology integration with the library media specialist and the ed tech and the computer lab. And that is it.
Anybody have any questions? Mike?
Busy, busy.
Yeah. The wheels keep turning, don't they, in technology around here? Thank you very much, Mike. Okay. Where's the professional learning committee, community? You have the article.
So, a couple of thoughts, questions. Because Ken, I wasn't here last meeting. Ken shared this with everybody last time, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I throw it out there. What I, when Ken sent this last time, I, I loved it. The, I can see particularly PLCs, as they're often called. When we look at it, when I look at the strategic plan, I have a feeling we're going to be talking a lot more about PLCs down the road. It's my prediction. So, thought it would be good if we talked a little bit about, I think there's two questions here. What, what is it? And two, how can it help us do the work we're doing? Because I see playing a role at the, you know, I can see playing a role teacher level, administrative level, and at the board level. The question is, because I know it's getting late, do we want to, I'm happy to chat about it, but I'm not sure how much everybody, if everybody got a chance to read it. But next time, actually taking a look at it with those two questions in mind, what is it and how might it help us do our work, particularly if it relates to the strategic plan, knowing that it's getting kind of late, suggesting tabling that, so that we can have a good discussion?
I know. Sometimes I feel we need a workshop to discuss-
I agree.
Things.
But we don't have-
And not do business.
Yeah.
That's what-
We just don't have a lot of time for the workshops.
Now, it's, now it's going to come up to budget season.
What is it and how do we implement, or is it just-
Yeah. So, it, in the nature of it, it's such a question, like, what is professional learning community? And two, how can it help us do our work? Yeah, maybe that's a broader question I have is, because I do think with, like, with what Joy was talking about, with the, the strategic plan, with the shift towards proficiency-based learning, with all, we are, there's so much happening.
Yes. I feel we need to need.
And as a board, I think it's really hard for us to sort of stay cognizant and knowledgeable about all of these different things that are coming across the table that are, that we're expected to sort of provide policy and, and guidance on when we, when do we have the time to actually become more knowledgeable about them. It's nice to do it a little bit during the meetings, but it's, we have so much business to do in the meetings. It'd be nice to have some time to actually discuss these things.
Right.
So, I don't know the right way to do it, but it'd be nice to have some more space to have some deeper conversations about some of the substance-
Right. Our own learning.
-of the nature of the work. And our own learning, absolutely.
Yeah, exactly.
It's hard for us, in, in the spirit of PLC, it's hard for us to be a PLC, because we're always doing business.
Right.
So, how do we actually create some of that space?
Yeah. I think it would be good too, if we could maybe look at planning a workshop meeting sometime before we get heavy into the budget season, because then our focus is going to be all budgetary. If we could plan one, I think it would be good for us to discuss even more deeply what our role as a committee, as a school committee is in the-
Strategic plan.
-strategic plan and how we're going to play out that role as a board. So, maybe we need to think about trying to schedule a-
A date.
And I can work with your president to decide how soon we can do this. We could look at administratively, who we would like there. We can have some initial discussions. Maybe it could be the end of January, a little, anywhere, somewhere in that time.
I think I have some time.
Okay. We'll work out, we'll, we'll work in a workshop night that's-
Reasonable.
Just, just a workshop night.
Can I make an out-of-box suggestion of, you know, a daytime, you know, whether it's a Saturday or something, you know, getting, these make for long days as well, that whether, if we're going to do a couple of hours, you know, whether there's an alternative daytime as opposed to nighttime.
Yeah. I like daytime.
Me too.
Me too.
Move around sometimes.
I think a little more terracing on the day.
Depends.
Exactly.
That's your worst guess.
I have to plan, plan ahead.
Right. Well, even, even again, again, if you're looking ahead, it schedules three o'clock in the afternoon, which is not typical and not available all the time. But, you know, if we want to do some heavy-duty discussions, we don't want to be clock-watching, you know, and, you know, it's 12 and 14-hour days are tough on people.
And we're a little more fresh, for sure.
Yeah.
Have you heard anything out there about?
Those are the short days.
But have you heard anything out there about now they're looking at to have the students print rather than write?
I saw that too.
What you mean by print, like cursive?
Print, because instead of writing, because they feel that they can't, nobody can read the writing by the time they're at the end of school, and they want them to print. And then they all discussed about, well, how are you ever going to sign your name? You know, it was quite an interesting thing. I listened to a lot of late-night, you know, Kentucky, Cincinnati radio stations. And, yeah.
There've been some articles in the paper about that, too.
Oh, is that right?
I think a lot of it is because of the increase in the technology where we don't even do-
You type.
Learning keyboarding and printing.
They can't read cursive, you know. Although I know way back when, cursive was known, teaching it in the first grade, because it was helping kids to learn how to read and write earlier. Now, but they, now kids can't read it.
No, they can't read it. My mother writes in it and my son, who's now 18, says, "What does, what did Grandma write?" Come on now. It's not foreign language.
One more question about the workshop piece. I think it's great if we can find some time to have some different level kinds of conversations that can help the work. Don't want to have a workshop to just have a workshop. So, well, if we, let's say we have two hours together. There's a billion things we could talk about. What do we want to do?
I think-
If we can have, yeah.
I think Ken and I can get together and try to come up with a time that's going to be good for everybody.
And a less-
And then we'll, we can send out, I can send out some-
But we should just send ideas to her.
For, for ideas.
That sounds good.
For, for putting an agenda together for it, so that we're focused in what, what we're.
What we want to accomplish.
Yes.
Yeah, that's good, thank you.
Okay, then let's see, what else do we have? Student data, any data, you gave us some data.
Upcoming data.
Our next meet, for, in regards to student data, next time we meet, are we going to be, I think we referenced, but I just want to make sure we got it down, will we, what data will we be looking at next time? We mentioned based on data, what's reasonable?
I will, I will provide you with the English Language Arts as the focus first.
Reading?
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good. Well, look at that upcoming data. I jumped ahead. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Celebration of learning presentation.
Nothing.
Don't have one of those tonight.
But we have some excellent concerts tomorrow night and.
Yes, we do.
Tuesday.
Tomorrow night and Tuesday. Will they be recorded as well?
Yeah, the goal is to get them recorded on TV, and I now have a YouTube channel, so they're on YouTube.
Ooh, good.
So this board meeting will be on YouTube.
Maybe we'll see it on the Today Show one of these days. They put a lot of YouTube stuff.
Don't know if we get a lot of hits, we get money.
If we're advertising, which I'm not allowed to do, so.
Want to get Big Pepsi logo on it?
Okay, committee reports, long-term planning committee?
We didn't meet this evening.
Okay, and the policy committee is going to set some meeting dates.
Yeah, these are some topics that we do need to discuss, and so maybe Jeanette and I will be able to put together a meeting schedule.
Aren't you coming?
Yep. I think I'm still in the committee, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we, no, we haven't been together since the last.
Yeah, no, I'm just never around, no, I know. Exactly.
It's going to be grounded.
I don't have any, any flights scheduled. I know, know faraway work for any time in the foreseeable future.
Good.
It'll change tomorrow, now that I've said that.
Book them.
That's it, now that'd be good.
Okay, so you guys will get, the three of you will get together and set up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Negotiations committee, you have something for us tonight?
Take 8.3 off the agenda the next time.
Okay.
Uh-oh.
What? That's good, I don't have to discuss it anymore for three years.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I got you, I thought you were postponing the discussion till next time.
From here on, and take it off, I'm done, we're done. Hopefully, if the board agrees with what became of the contract, and we'll see how we, if we ratify it tonight.
Okay.
We're there now, right?
And we're there right now, so just keep on going.
The support staff has ratified it with their, the union group.
The support staff has ratified it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a done deal, right?
Not until we both.
Booed us.
Few minutes, few minutes.
It's on 9.1.
Okay, sorry.
Before we get to 9.1, though, I do want to extend a huge thank you to Mary and Ken for really.
Mostly Mary.
Yeah, final stages, there's a lot of logistical, and so.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You really did.
That's why I said, "Take it off."
We know it's a, it's a really fun job, but.
Fun, I recommend it next time, Kevin stays on it when it comes up again.
You have to thank Mary's husband for his tolerance, too.
Yeah. The level of detail, the level of detail, it's very appreciated. And here, I thought working with the sport contract would be.
Such a breeze.
Well, the, your good introduction to.
Negotiations.
Oh, yeah, that'd be, yeah.
You learned.
I learned a lot, it was great.
So you've had this in your packet, and you've had a chance to look at it, and based on recommendation by Mary, and she wants to make the motion.
Yes. I'm ready to make a motion to ratify the Act and Education Support Staff Association MEA/NEA contract, July 1, 2013 through June 30 of 2016.
Okay.
Whatever's on the cover.
So I may, I don't have that.
Oh.
Quick, give her a copy. Quick, please.
And now I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
And seconded by Kevin. Moved by Mary, seconded by Kevin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Good job.
Okay.
Glad, glad.
Okay, as I look at the rest of our agenda items here, we've, I think we've taken care of them.
I don't have anything to hand, it feels like special.
Nope, we don't have any news to report, so.
We did the new business already.
He, he says he doesn't have anything yet. Do you want to take, like, just a couple minutes and?
I can, I can brief you in exec session for, but it's, it's a one-sentence, two-sentence thing.
Okay, we'll do that.
Yeah.
Two sentences will be plenty for us if it's.
So we're going into executive session?
So I'll make a motion that we go in, somebody make a motion that we go into executive session?
So moved.
In regard to personnel issues?